Can you hear me back there? Okay, welcome everyone to March Board of Supervisors meeting. Would you please all rise and join me in the pledge to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America. Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent.
All right, thank you all for coming. I will. Public comments on the agenda items, is, are there any public comments on the agenda items? Yes.
Anthony Vogner, Clymer Avenue.
I am, under the consent agenda, the Joint Rec Report, is, is there a reason why there's no treasurer's report in that?
Not sure.
That's what we received.
Okay. Because there's a lot of bills being paid, but there's no report, so.
Right.
That's all. Thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, Dave Rice, two nineteen Augustine. I attended Planning Commission meeting last week and watched, recorded video multiple times. Act five thirty-seven is the Pennsylvania Sewer Facilities Act. In the Planning Commission meeting, there was a mention of a thirty-day public comment period for any changes to the act five thirty-seven. I was unaware when the public, when, unaware when that public meeting was held, so public concerns could be brought before any action was taken. Exactly when was that thirty-day comment period or has it not yet occurred? To my knowledge, no advance notice was given to these act five thirty-seven changes. I do understand the common sense perspective that the road is open with the water lines being installed, so why not run sewer as well? Before the, before they get repaved, that's just logic. Seems to me all the correct information was not given to the Planning Commission, which raises concerns. One property actually has a new two-year-old sand mound on the Almont Road on the other side of three oh nine. There was mention of seven failing system out of the seven properties, so that just doesn't add up in my book. The Telford Borough Authorities offer to help serve the residents. I'd say sure, let's make sure all the voices of the township are heard with a thirty-day public comment period and allow the Planning Commission, as well as Board of Supervisors, the proper time to digest all of the information before making a rushed decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? There we go. Good evening, Brian Landis, one twenty-five Augustine Road. Kind of tagged TV off Dave. At last week's Planning Commission meeting, the Telford Borough Authority made a request for act five thirty-seven study regarding sewer line on Almont Road, the hospital side. Up to this point, I believe the only thing we discussed or understood, at least by me, that there was going to be a sleeve run under the three oh nine for future sewer loose. For, sorry, I have Invisalign and my lips get stuck. The line on Almont is half completed already. While this is the Sellersville region, Telford Borough is burying the pipe and would service those homes on Almont per their plan. So from that meeting, here are some soundbites from the Telford representatives in support of why the Planning Commission should have blessed their study and why they want to run this line. These properties have experienced malfunctions. One resident contacted the DEP about extending the sewer service to that area. There has been a need for service for this, for septic in this sewer, in this area for a while. Chris asked, by not doing this, meaning run it, will we halt the sewer line repairs to this seven homes? They said yes. They also said when the water lines go in, the residents inquiring about sewer. Oh, I'm sorry, when the water lines went in, the, the North Penn Water Authority, the residents started inquiring about sewer. The pressure came from the residents, per Telford. The seven homes help recoup the cost of installing the line. Ultimately, this helps us provide service to the other part of three oh nine, to the service area. The service line could ultimately serve a larger area. For us to serve that end of West Rock Hill, the line needs to be put in. Because the story told by Telford didn't seem to make sense to me, I actually knocked on all the doors on the homes on that side of Almont Road. Of the four houses on the left, house number eighteen, the first one has a brand-new sound man, sound, sand mound added two years ago. Twenty-six, once sewer. Twenty-eight, looks condemned and has been empty for four years. That's the one with the holding tank. And from what the neighbors say, it's been vacant for four years. I talked to all three residents on the right-hand side of Almont, and none of her having septic issues, nor do any of them have interest in hooking to the sewer line. Twenty-six, the one that called the DEP, wants sewer hookup, which I believe is not the same as a failing system. Also know this is an investment property, and houses are worth more with sewer versus septic. At the Planning Commission last week, meeting last week, members commented that they supported fixing the failing systems, which I believe provided the rationale behind them making the recommendation tonight to support Telford's request. After talking to most of the Almont Road residents, there does not appear to be seven failing systems at all. Nor do they seem to be applying pressure to bring sewer hookups to their home. Finally, Chris asked, the guy from D, or Telford, if the DEP was on board with their plan. Pat said yes. The question then I have is this.
Thanks, guys. Thank you for your public comment. Are there any other public comments on the agenda items? Okay, I'll make a brief statement regarding this project, this, this scenario that people have been making public comments on regarding the sewer. That is not on.
You can hear your microphones, please. We can't hear. I listen to them anymore. I'm hearing you guys.
You can't hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that.
But don't move closely back and use your mics, please.
You're welcome. So, uh, as I was saying, this particular, particular project that they're talking about public comment on is not on our agenda tonight. And that is why they had made public comment, but it's not on the agenda item. That is not part of what the board is discussing tonight. They, they have some steps to go through. Mr. Lipicott, will you, will you please inform the public on what would have to happen for that project on the other side of Almont?
Sure, under the Authorities Act, municipalities can run sewer lines to get from anywhere as long as they don't serve. It's currently in our Sellersville service area. What Telford Borough Authority will need to do is to get Sellersville Borough Authority to agree to let them serve that area. Also have to get the West Rock Hill Board of Supervisors to agree to serve that area. There also will have to be a public hearing on it. So, right now, Telford Borough Authority cannot mandate anyone to.
So there will be several steps, just, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because this is not on our agenda tonight. There will be several steps that have to happen before they could do anything. Okay? And it would have to come back to the Board of Supervisor. Just because the Planning Commission gave a nod or a favorable vote, that does not mean that this board did.
As far as we did it, we figured Chris was going to be giving an update, so it's connected to that. That's the one.
It's okay, it's okay. But I just wanted to clear it up because I know that there's people that are nervous and worried and think, but it's not on our agenda. This is not in front of the board, and it won't be for quite some time. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, nope. You don't need to discuss anything. It's not on the agenda. Thank you.
The way of thinking about it is that this is them asking for permission to ask. So we're not dealing with this right now. We will later on, and we will be very focused on it.
Okay, if there's no other public comment on the agenda items, I will move on to announcements. We will be having an executive session after tonight's meeting to discuss personnel and real estate. Moving on to number three, consent agenda. You have the February nineteenth meeting minutes, the win of plan approval status, escrow release of vouchers, the MyLars to sign for the gun spotlight adjustment, and Wawa. We also have emergency service report, building zoning, building permits report, public works report, conservation committee report. The joint rec authority report is on there as well. And there's a treasurer's report on there as well, too. Mr. Lipicott, would you please read the treasurer's report?
Sure, uh, the, Mr. Chairman, the treasurer's report as of February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. The general fund, one million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-seven cents. Highway aid, one hundred thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. Open space, one million, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred dollars and twenty cents. The park fund, one hundred and one thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-six cents. The equipment fund, fifteen thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and fifty-four cents. Highway capital, one hundred and forty-five, seventy-one. Street light, thirty-seven thousand, six oh nine, twenty-two. General fund reserve, five hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. ARP funding, zero. Open space manager field, forty thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Sewerage maintenance, two sixteen, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and five cents. Stormwater fund, one thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. And the escrow funds, nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-six.
Okay, any questions regarding that?
I have none. I have like a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you.
I did have one point that, uh, there's the joint rec authority.
Excuse me, Hal. I will ask, I will ask Greg to read the joint rec authority after we're done discussing the bills and payment of the bills. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. So we have a motion made on the floor. I'll second it. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now Greg, for the, for the joint rec authority report, would you please read that all for me? Since Angela is not here, she's committed to another meeting tonight. Just to bring everybody up to speed.
Sure, we received a report from Angela. Members present the February eighth and March fifth meeting, all members were there were Shelley, Tony Buck, Don Krauthamel. Shelley attended due to Zoom meeting. All board members approved the following items, the minutes and financials, the feasibility study, rec desk software, signs and postcards have been ordered. The dead tree removal, flower sale, swim lessons and classes. Unfinished business, the snack stand will have some interest to run the snack stand, and Shelley has been following up with them. Donations, Don Krauthamel and Roseanne Davis have been in contact with donors. And for the slide, Shelley Milkenos was getting prices for a new slide. The filing reports were given by various committees. Fundraising, dine and donate have been set up. Philly Philly, three fifteen, Lumberto's, four three, The Horse, four seventeen, Bankers, six ten. They will also have booths at the Celtic Fest and the Pen Ridge Community Day. They have a flower sale set up for four eighteen. Has been approved. It's just pending the owner approved location. It's just pending approval. Volunteers have started placing door hangers on new residents' stores. There were no public comment, and it was adjourned at nine ten.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, are there any questions or concerns regarding the joint rec authority report that was read?
I just want to say thank you for everybody who came out to Celtic Fest. We made eleven, eleven hundred and twenty-five dollars Philly Philly cheesesteak helped contribute five hundred and eighty-one. And thank you to hotel for the eight hundred. So we're starting off the year with almost two grand in donations. Thank you, everyone.
Great, okay. I did have a couple of concerns myself regarding the, the report, however, with Angela not being here, they won't be answered. Normally, I ask for how many season tickets we have sold so far to this date, and then I also like to see what our, what our total financials are for the, for what's in the account. But we can, we will have to wait for that till next month. So if there's no other questions or concerns, I will entertain a motion for approval on the consent agenda as presented.
Well, it did have numbers, but you cut me off, so.
They should have been in the report, Hal. Thank you. Okay. Moving forward, I, I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I made that motion.
Okay. Second it, all those in favor of signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving forward. Confirmed appointments, I don't see any on here. Okay, next on the agenda is committee reports. Planning Commission, Mr. Chris Durstein.
Evening.
Good evening.
So you want to talk some more about sewer?
If it's on your report, man.
It's on my report. So you heard a lot of information on this already that was brought up after our meeting with TBA. So I'm going to read my report and we'll, we'll add to it a little bit. So they were in regarding a special study for the sewer line. Almont Road between Lawn Avenue and three oh nine. Claims of several properties of seven having failing or suspect systems. A lot of this is repetition. So the road is open for the, the North Penn Water Transmission Line, so it makes sense to, to put this in now. You know, especially if it's going into fix all of these failing systems. It's in the Sellersville servicing area. PBA would need to get a conveyance agreement from them. Cost of the project came, is coming in just under three hundred thousand. With tie-in fees at only ten thousand for the properties on Almont. So there are seven properties, three hundred thousand divided by seven is a lot more than ten thousand. They admitted that, you know, the, the balance of the cost would be recouped by future connections, which would presumably be on the west side of three oh nine. They were, excuse me, they were looking for a recommendation to approve the special study. Essentially letting DEP know that we would agree to amending the five thirty-seven to allow TBA to serve in a Sellersville district. That, that was my report before I got here. So we did not know that they had already started construction on this pipeline. We would presumably had not the most accurate information on the, on the condition of the seven, the systems on the seven homes there. So that being said, we did agree to make this recommendation to DEP. So I don't know where it goes from here. I'm supposed to be signing a, a letter that's going to be drafted to send to DEP. So that's all I can tell you right now. That's my report on Telford Borough Authority. Do you have any questions?
No, I think, I think I know the whole story.
Yeah, you heard it all. All right, any other? All right, second on our agenda was the Benaya Durstein Cold Storage Warehouse on Meeting House Road. You all are familiar with. We had previously recommended preliminary, preliminary approval. Awaiting some details on the off-site widening on Meeting House from the proposed Wawa site up to Old State Road and some other outstanding items. We were satisfied with what they had presented, and they also agreed to installation of a four-way stop at Meeting House and Old State, if warranted. So basically, they satisfied everything. We are looking forward to give them final, so we are, we are recommending conditional final. So that was my report for that one. Any questions on that?
Thank you, Chris.
Yep. Third item was outfit called TNG and D, which is Dave Nice Contracting. They plan to develop a sixteen-acre, sixteen-plus acre parcel on the west side of Bethlehem Pike, just north of Forest Road. He's got a bunch of equipment staged up there. If you've been up the road, you know exactly what I'm talking about.
And, and piles of.
Piles of dirt that are creeping our way up. This would be a G four contractor service use. As I said, he has an excavation business. He's proposing a ten thousand square foot shop building with an office. Future plan for four thousand square foot building. There would also be material bins storing items that, you know, type of materials that they use in their business, and will also offer that as a I don't want to call it retail, but they will be selling that product as well, but not out of that facility. They would be delivering from that facility. They wouldn't have retail people coming in to load. Then the PC two district. They would, they're proposing on lots septic in a well. Handful of the standard waivers. They're, they're going to require some more discussion before we can agree to any of that, and they had a fair number of outstanding items on the engineering review that still need to be addressed, so we took no action on that project. Any questions on that?
No, no questions.
All right. So our last item was a review of the proposed electronic sign ordinance. We, we were fine. A question arose about existing non-conforming signs and what's going to happen with them. And if, you know, houses of worship was one of the concerns, you know, that, I think, I guess there's one out there somewhere now, and others had asked how that's going to play out for them. It, they, unless they're in a specific zone to allow it, they won't be allowed to have them, so they would, they would need to look for relief from zoning. So we agreed to recommend the approval. Recommend approve, I should say, for the sign ordinance.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you very much for your report. Any questions for Chris? If not, entertain a motion for approval.
Nope, no questions, having watched the long meeting. I guess we do have some of them that might have gotten permits, so they might actually be non-conforming and might not have to go through zoning, but we'll deal with that as it comes, but maybe does, thank you guys for doing a good job of hashing through everything and asking all the good questions.
You got it. Thank you.
Oh, second.
Did you make the motion?
Nope.
Second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. All right, moving forward, next on the agenda is the Park and Rec, Mr. Dave Rice.
All right, back here for the Park and Rec. All right.
You have to but just complain a little bit.
Go ahead.
Because on page fifty-eight, Park and Rec didn't submit their report in time, and they get to speak.
So.
And.
I was just going to go, I was just going to go over the list of events for the.
I love Dave.
Yeah.
One at a time, not all at once. Putting that on.
It's just a list of events that we have. It's on the, it's on the.
It's not you. It's just that.
It's all good.
Your deadline applies to everybody, but you have a pass.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Fishing Derby, April twelfth, coming up. Nine AM to noon. It's right across the street at the, at the park. It's a great event. Last year, we had a hundred and forty-two. Awesome day. The kids had a blast. And everybody else that fished afterwards with their fishing licenses also had a good time. Two weeks later, following that, Liberty Trail Girl Scouts are actually having their Arbor Day event on April twenty-sixth from eleven AM to one PM over again at the park. They had, it's their third year, I believe. So they had a good event last year as well, September Fest. It's our thirtieth annual. So everybody should be putting it on their phones. They should be writing it down. Thirtieth annual September Fest this year. September twenty-eighth, noon to four. It's going to be big. We're going to have fun. Feature Film and Fires in October. We don't have that a date yet or movie, but we're working on that. It's, we're, the thirtieth annual is coming up, and that's the big, that's the big one for the year, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
I didn't hear anything about pickleball. Okay, Fishing Derby, April twelfth, right? Saturday. You're going to be looking for.
I'll be asking my two fellow supervisors to contribute fifty dollars each for the biggest, three largest fish.
I'll leave, I'll leave it on your pillow.
Thank you.
Already gave you a hundred for a bigger fish.
That wasn't for the three biggest fish. You gave a hundred dollars toward it. Is that, are you saying that you're?
I can't let Kevin upstate.
Oh, oh, so, so that was, that was for the three biggest fish. I thought that was just a donation to the Fishing Derby, which is what Mr. Kevin Eats gave.
All right, I'll match him better.
Thank you. All right, that being said.
Sorry, just following up on Dave. Since he mentioned pickleball, we were working on getting pickleball over on the Holiday House head again. We've got two basketball, two tennis courts we're not, that we're not using, which we're looking to rehab into pickleball courts because we haven't used them for anything for the last ten years. So talk to us because we've got the location. We've got the twelve-foot tall chain link fence so that you don't lose the balls all, all over the place, and we're looking for some way of getting that back together.
All right, now I'll entertain a motion for approval to the park, for the Park and Rec report as presented.
So moved.
All right, second. All those signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you all very much. All right, next on the agenda is the Police Commission report. Mr. Chief Paul Dickens, how are you?
All right, I'm good. How are you this evening?
Good.
I have the February twenty twenty-five activity report for the Penner Regional Police Department. In the month of February, the police department responded to eight hundred and twenty-seven calls for service. Of those calls, three hundred and forty-five were in East Rock Hill Township, four seventy-five were here in West Rock Hill Township. And seven of our calls for service were assisting our neighboring agencies. The department handled twenty-six traffic crashes in the month of February, with thirteen of them being reportable and the other thirteen being non-reportable, so equally twenty-six, with six occurring in East Rock Hill Township and twenty here in West Rock Hill Township. Our criminal activity that was reported for the month of February, we had thirteen crimes against property, one crime against a person, four crimes against society, and twelve group B offenses, which are your more minor offenses. The reported crimes included in East Rock Hill Township, a burglary, two criminal mischief reports, a drug complaint, DUI complaint, one fraud, three harassments, a report of impersonating a law enforcement officer, and one report of theft. Here in West Rock Hill Township, we had two hit-and-run crashes, also burglary, one criminal mischief, two reports of frauds, uh, two reports of drugs, one fraud, two harassments, a violation of the ignition, yeah. Ignition interlock law, one sex offense, two thefts, and three complaints of trespassing. So our criminal charges filed in the month of Jan, uh, February included one operation of a vehicle without an ignition interlock system, nine DUI charges, one trespassing charge, one criminal mischief, three institutional vandalisms, three harassments, one underage drinking and possession of alcohol by a minor, one simple assault, one drug possession, one charge of drug paraphernalia, one possession of child pornography, dissemination of child pornography, and use of a communication device in that. Our other police activities in the month of February were two hundred and twenty traffic enforcement details. We issued a hundred and two traffic citations, a hundred and thirty-four traffic warnings, conducted twenty-three school checks, a hundred and seven park checks, fifty-two business checks, and officers attended or participated in one hundred and ninety-one hours of training. So so far for the year of twenty twenty-five, the police department has handled one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two calls for service, responded and investigated sixty-eight traffic accidents. Sixty-two offenses were reported. Fifty-two criminal charges were filed, and officers attended or participated in two hundred and twenty hours of training for the year of twenty twenty-five to this point. And that would be your police report for the month.
Very good, chief. I really appreciate that.
Chief, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Without being specific, under criminal charges, what is the use of a communication device?
So use of communication devices, if you would use a cell phone or a computer to disseminate or conduct a, or conduct a criminal act.
Okay.
So if you're using a computer to commit theft, you could be charged with use of a communicate, communication device, also dissemination inappropriate photos can do that as well, so.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Sir Matthew Broderick of War Games.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion for approval of the chief's report as presented. Okay, motions are made?
Second.
Second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Great night. All right, next on the agenda is the tax collector report. Suzanne Clark, how are you, Suzanne?
Okay, as you know, tax bills were mailed March the first. Everyone should have received their tax bill in the mail, and if you have not, please let me know immediately. I'll get you a copy of your tax bill. Unfortunately, the failure of not to receive a tax bill does not exempt you from paying the tax bill. For the month of March for annual taxes, so far I've collected fifty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. Streetlight tax, five hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-nine cents. And that is the end of my report. I do, I will have extra office hours in April for when discount is due the thirty-first.
Just in case anybody doesn't know, can you tell us your hours?
I don't know them off the top of my head, but they are on my tax bill. Okay, yeah.
Very good. Thank you, Suzanne.
I will tell you, though, that it's the last two weeks of April. I have to work, that will be hours, three days, or, yeah, three days for the last two weeks of the month of April.
Hours are Tuesdays?
I always have hours on Tuesdays, so I'll be there. It's like Mondays and Thursdays. It's on my tax bill.
All right.
But if you need to know, I'll be happy to get it to you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the tax collector's report as presented.
So moved.
Okay, motion second. All those signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you so much. Okay. Moving forward, next on the agenda is the engineer's report. Mr. Balla.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no specific items, agenda items, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Steve?
I was going to think, I think if any, I was gonna ask if there was anything on the store service area. But then I realized that you went over all of that and anybody who's interested can go back and look at the planning commission meeting where you reviewed all of that information. Correct. So just to put that out, if anybody has any questions, go to YouTube. We have a YouTube channel and Steve did a very good job of summarizing all of the background for the Almont Road extension. Aside from that, no questions.
Okay, so there's no report, nothing on the report, so nothing to approve. Moving forward, solicitor report.
Good evening. Good, I'm doing well. How are you?
Very well, thank you.
Um. I'm sorry.
Are you warm enough? Usually Mary is freezing all the time.
I'm, I run the other side of the, the gamma most of the time, but thank you. The first matter is the PWTA sewer discharge ordinance. Uh, this was discussed last month. This ordinance regulates materials that canon cannot be discharged, the PWTA sewer system. It's been advertised as authorized at last month's meeting. Um, it's before you for a public hearing and consideration of adoption. Um, it'd be appropriate this time to ask for public comment.
Yep.
On the ordinance.
I'll open this hearing for, for the ordinance, for the PWTA sewer discharge ordinance. Is there any public comment on this item?
Well, I would just double check that PWTA is Henry Waste Water Treatment. And their service area is basically south of three oh nine.
PWTA is the sewer plant that's down at the bottom of West Rock Hill in the Sellersville Borough. It's made up of several authorities, uh, Perkissy Borough Authority, Telford Borough Authority, Hilltown, uh, Township Authority. Silverdale Borough, East Rock Hill Borough. And what this ordinance does is it limits on what can be put into the sewer system. Um, it's to make sure that the sewer system is incorrupted and it gets released into the east branch. So it's something that's mandated by EPA and the DEP. We just have to make sure people don't dump illegal materials into the sources.
If you were to drive down Farmer's Lane, you would end up at the Sellersville Sewer Plant. Most people don't know it by PWTA. They know it by Sellersville. Okay? All right, so.
And no public comment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I don't see any public comment, no.
I think we can close the hearing then.
All right, and, uh. Hearing?
I think we should entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance, ordinance number two fifty, that would be.
Two? Two fifty?
Two five zero, correct.
I'll move to enact ordinance two five zero.
Good.
Okay, motion's been made?
Second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye. Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you.
One quick public services that the, uh, East Branch Perkyum is gonna have a cleanup with the Perkyum and Watershed Conservancy coming up in about two or three weeks. So if anybody actually wants to help out, they're gonna be cleaning up and pulling junk out of the creek. Uh, from the what, from the sewer plant all the way down to the county line, all the way down to Schwan'sville. But if you're interested, please come out.
Okay, Mr. Hoover, moving forward.
Move. Next matter is, uh, towing ordinance. Uh, this is in request for an authorization to advertise. And this towing ordinance was drafted at the request of the chief of police of the regional police, uh, department. And in short, establishes regulations for towing companies used by the police department when there are accidents or other events on our roads and highways. So towing companies would be licensed under the ordinance to ensure the health and safety of the public is protected. Um, and also East Rock Hill will be considering a similar ordinance, uh, for consistency, uh, for the regional police department. And so we're asking for your authorization to advertise this ordinance and for a public hearing on the ordinance at your April meeting.
Yep. So I'll entertain a motion for advertisement of this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made? Second. All those signify by saying aye. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay, moving forward then, Mr. Hoover.
Moving forward is an authorization to advertise supervisor compensation ordinance. Um, the compensation of the members of this board is limited by the state. About every ten years or so, the state increases the compensation. Last year, the legislature increased the maximum compensation for township, townships this size to four thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, we've drafted an ordinance reflecting the new compensation set by the state. Uh, note that the salaries of all the sitting board members will not be changed by, uh, by this until after each.
Re-election.
Yes, after reelection, after running for office and being elected. Um, would that take, would that change take effect? So we're looking for a motion to authorize the advertising of this ordinance and for a hearing and possible adoption at your April meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion's been made?
I will second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye.
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 The next item is an authorization resolution for conservation easement purchase. So pursuant to your prior authorization, uh, we now have a signed agreement for the sale, oops, excuse me, agreement of sale for a conservation easement on the Holiday House property. Uh, this will protect the pool against future development and infuse the joint recreation authority with some much needed capital. This resolution authorizes the expenditure of the funds necessary to purchase the easement. We are asking for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for.
I will move that motion.
Second.
Second. Do you want to have any discussion on this matter?
That's fourteen point four acres, correct?
Okay, so for those of you that don't, or are not familiar, a lot of you are familiar with what has been going on here. The township is going to be preserving permanently the pool property, the joint rec authority property, which is owned by Sellersville and West Rock Hill. And that is going to give funds for the, for the pool to be able to function. And they are going to be getting a lump sum of money to make sure that they can function. And in the, in return, the property will be preserved, so there could never be any building or development on it in the future. That is what the intent was here, and I am very proud to say I believe everybody will be happy. So how that money's managed will be up to the joint rec authority, not the supervisors. Okay?
Important.
Okay.
So very important.
One more.
Yep.
Did we make, was there a motion on that yet? I'm sorry.
Nope, I, I need to have a, we, we had a motion in a second, but I did not ask for approval. So with that being said, and that clarification. We have a motion made in a second. All those signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. There you go, Matt.
One more matter.
Yep.
And this is resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven. Uh, this is regarding three one one five Old State Road. Uh, you reviewed this land development application for a warehouse at three one one five Old State Road. That was discussed in the planning commission report. The planning commission has now authorized both the conditional, uh, preliminary and final approval. The resolution was drafted pursuant to your instructions, but the conditions have been approved by the developer. If you're inclined to adopt the resolution, you can do so by making a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval of that. So moved. Motion's been made?
Yeah, we talked about this last month and it had to go back to the planning commission. That's done.
It did.
Seems good. I'll second that.
Motion's been made in a second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it.
That's all I have to report. Thank you.
You still hear me back there, Brian?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We'll make sure that the mics are pointed down more. Thank you. Okay, what else you got?
That's it. That's it. Thank you.
Mary owes you big time. I'll make a motion to approve the solicitor report as presented.
Okay, motion's been made?
I will second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. All right, moving forward. Next on the agenda is the manager's report. Mr. Lippincott.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I have one item on the agenda. It is the County Line Road Sewer Project. Uh, Telford Borough Authority is requesting a public meeting here, March thirty-first, to meet with the residents of County Line. And the, uh, development down called, uh, Hidden Valley to discuss the, uh, bitted out project, uh, for the sewer line. Uh, it's going to cost approximately thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars to each resident to hook up to sewer. Um, Telford Borough Authority has agreed that if people do not want to hook up right away, um, they would wait until upon sale or transfer of the property. Um, within ten years of the sewer service availability, then forcing mandatory hookup. Or where a property owner cannot demonstrate that the, uh, old's, the sewer system, the onsite septic system is satisfactory functioning and operating. Uh, they would like to have a public meeting so that they can get feedback from the residents and so that the board of supervisors can get feedback from the residents. And that would be March thirty-first, seven PM here at their township.
Okay, just for everybody's information, this is not approving anything. This is allowing primarily Telford Authority to meet with residents to explain the situation. This is something that has been in the works and this plan to, to fix these sewers has been ongoing since nineteen seventy-seven. So, uh, I've, I've had a lot of experience with this, twelve years on the planning commission before I became a supervisor and this is twenty years now. So this, this has been intended and, uh, worked on to be fixed, to fix those systems down there with publics for a long, long time. And the board's position has always been to make sure we did not want it to cost more than what a sand mound was cost. And we were very adamant about that. And this has been going on for, oh, the last four or five supervisors that have been here. And they have come forward with, with a plan to make it so that it is cost effective for homeowners. And there, once again, this is not a mandatory thing. If we do let this go through, it would be, uh, only if the residents would want to hook up or if they need to hook up, or if they sold their house, they would have to do it then. So, um, I will enter, I guess, I should add. Any comment or question from the fellow board members, whether we should move forward with allowing Telford Authority to schedule a meeting with the residents?
I think we should.
You think we should?
Absolutely. Yeah, I think a lot of.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate. I mean, this is actually, it's difficult because it's between the two counties and two townships. Because it's us on one side, Frank County on the other. Basically from the bridge at the bottom of County Line Road. Uh, going up till you get to Telford Borough, but for our side, it's mostly Circle Drive. And that area, which they're all small lots and it's all the back of the hill and it's all red shale and a lot of the septic systems have been kind of taken up, have been kept up, but it's still, uh, a bit of a concern. So like I said, we've, as you said, we've been looking at this for twenty, thirty years and been in real estate for thirty years. That's always been a concern for the neighbors and this will be a way of fixing it forever.
So I will entertain a motion to advertise or to allow Telford Authority to, to, um, schedule a meeting with residents.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made?
I will second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Okay. Good.
I do have one additional item. Uh, Steve and I met with the contractor that is going to be doing the paving from last year, which is Thousand Acre Road, Augustine Road and Maisy Road. Um, they're supposed to start within the next two weeks.
Yep.
So once we have a firm date, we'll update the website. We'll send out an email notice and we'll try to notify all the neighbors. There's no date specific yet, um, but they told us probably within the next two weeks they'll give us some, when they're gonna start.
What I would like, I would like to, um, touch on that, on that comment regarding, uh, the email that was sent to us regarding the parking lot down here at Public Works Building. Okay? Have either of you two supervisors read that email?
Well, I have.
Okay, so it's, it's, Greg, would you please explain how much money it would cost if we were to move forward while they're paving Augustine Road to do the, the terrible part of the road and parking lot down at Public Works?
Sure, uh, when we met with them on Monday, I asked for a quote, um, from them for a change order, uh, in, in the bidding thing, in the bidding process. Of paving our driveway, the lower portion of the driveway in front of the Public Works Building. We got a quote for thirty-seven thousand dollars to do that work. That's for milling and paving. It includes the apron in front of the Public Works Building too. It's not just the driveway, it's the whole.
Right.
For all the paving.
So I would like to discuss this, have an open discussion with my fellow supervisors, because I believe that this is something that should be done now. While the paving company is right there on Augustine Road, for us to rebid this later and to do it, it will cost a lot more money than thirty-seven thousand dollars. And honestly, I do believe that you could find the money if you had to. I would support you taking it out of our reserves. Because we did not budget it. However, it is important that it needs to be done because of the condition of the falling apart blacktop as we know it now. Are there any comments or concerns, questions?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. I, I, this is one of my, uh, goals or my objectives back in January, but I said that, you know, we may be classified as a second-class township by the state of Pennsylvania, but we have to acolyte for a first-class township. We should look like we're a first-class township. This needs to be done. That, that's just a mess down there and by putting it off, it's only gonna get more expensive. They're here, the Donner Road right next door. Why not just finish the whole thing?
Would you be willing to put that in a motion?
I would. Maybe Mr. Hoover.
I have, if anybody's driven down to check in with the town, with the road crew, the parking lot was probably paved last thirty years ago, forty years ago. I have long hair. We're here, but it's been breaking up and we're, as long as we're gonna have the road, a paving company going right past, and if they're gonna mill it so that we actually get a good contact with it. And the area down there is a lot bigger than you think because they're turning around in a truck, in a tri-axle truck, then that area really gets beat up because they're coming in with salt, they're coming in with heavy trucks, they're coming in with heavy loads. If we've got a paving company that's gonna be five hundred feet that way doing Augustine Road, it makes a lot more sense to have them mill it off. Pay that, smooth it out so that we have a nice new base to start with.
Okay.
Be easier on the equipment.
We have a motion made and we have a second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
That's all I have.
Okay, Greg. We're moving forward. Okay, next on the agenda, old business, in the old business. I bring up one thing, and the one thing I want to bring up in old business is I had a discussion last month about the bridges, about the possibility of removing the resolution, uh, for the one-lane bridges that, that restricts them from being able to be planned to replace these two-lane safe passable bridges on Allentown Road. And if any of you were here, you remember that discussion that we had. Uh, I did not get support, or I don't feel I got support, and I think that Mr. Sherman said there should be more discussion on it and we should hear from, from people possibly. So I'm bringing that back to the table because for over twenty years, I've been concerned about the safety and the backing up. And I've had residents actually complain to me about the Allentown Road and the way the, the bottlenecks happen at the two one-lane bridges. And sometimes the one there at the church will pack up past the church where the cemetery is. So the township has a resolution in place that will not allow us to, to, to move forward with planning for two-lane safe passable bridges like they have up in Milford Township and down in Top, in, uh, Salford Township. So I will, I will ask if there would be any more discussion or if we're going to just let this sit for now and do further research.
Well, I did go back and had asked Greg to pull that information up. I pulled up all the old ordinances that dealt with bridges. I know I annoyed the chief to no end with asking stupid questions until I got better answers. But after looking at it, I don't, the resolution just says we'd like to keep the bridges historic, and I think that was mostly about supporting the historical society for the restoration of the Clymer Avenue Bridge. And my reading of it doesn't limit it to two lanes, so I don't think we would have to change anything. It's a Penn dot bridge. They don't care what we say, what we think, what we do anyway, but I will make a motion to rescind the ordinance.
Okay, I just, I do want to make sure that you're aware of it. It, it does matter because I went, I, I was involved with this with Paul Clymer, with Senator McElhaney. And I had, I had Mr. Haynes and the gentleman that owns Indian Valley Bull Carers and Jeff Markley, if you remember Jeff Markley. We went through and we planned out, we made sure that it would not affect the cemetery, that no. cemetery, that no graves would have to be disturbed, and it could have been done, other than this resolution. Now, Mr. Lippincott, would you please identify that the resolution in place does hold, and it would have to be rescinded? He did say he would rescind it.
Most likely, you would have to do another resolution. You would have to authorize another resolution being drafted to repeal that resolution, and then it would be on next month's agenda.
Okay. And just so everyone is aware, my my intent here has been because of residents complaining of of the bottleneck and the safety issues. Now, I do know that when you, when you have a one lane bridge and you go to two lane bridge, there has been concerns of people driving faster. And that road isn't bad. It it's very tight and it's deep ditches. However, we can't go anywhere and start anywhere with safety and planning unless we remove that resolution. This is not something that's going to happen next year or overnight. This is going to take a while to plan this, and it and it has to get on the Penn Dots list of when they do bridges, of when they may want to do it. But I will tell you this, when Senator McElhaney was a senator, he would have put, got that bridge on the list and done if it wouldn't have been for that resolution. So my concern is safety of the residents of our township and people that drive through it. Clymer Avenue is a one lane bridge, that's a county bridge, and on back roads, I would say one lane bridges are fine, but when you have a state Penn Dot Road, I believe you should have two lane safe passable bridges, just so people can pass without getting into accidents. That's all. Okay, enough said with that. So he, Mr. Sherman said he would support rescinding the, what's our next step to do this?
Um, your next step is to make a motion and second it.
Okay.
The township manager or the township solicitor to draft a new resolution.
Okay. You're making a motion to that?
I will make that as motion.
Okay. I will second the motion. Any discussion, Mr.?
Yes, I definitely want to have a discussion. I won't be on the record for a couple of things.
Okay.
Um.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. The survey that was done years ago, the big answer that we got, response that we got from the township citizens was they wanted a very rural, quiet, peaceful township. I think that by permitting a two lane bridge, you're inviting, as I have said last month, a lot of more traffic, a lot of speeding traffic, a lot of tractor trailers, even though there's signs that say they shouldn't be on that road. We also had the issue with the road base itself and the hill right above. The Twin Church is is unsuitable for trucks. Our chief has even mentioned that at the last meeting. We're going to have increased traffic. The bridge, if nothing else, is is traffic calming. And I know that, and I've been there, and I've been sitting in traffic, and I know what it's like, but you know what? Maybe it's a good thing just to, that's the time to look at your cell phone, or that's the time to just take a breath, because the whole world's in a big rush. So I just will not support any kind of ordinance or resolution to to change that.
Okay. Fair enough. That's fine. Okay, so motions have made and sure.
Thank you. My name's Brian Murray, 211 Ridge Valley Road. Just with regards to the, thank you for allowing me to make a comment for this. I just, I think David Collingwood is absolutely right with this. This is why he's the first and only Democrat I voted for. He said, "Traffic calming, that is a super important thing," and mostly because Ridge Valley, that area is designated as a village, right? Isn't that one of the villages of West Rock Hill? So we got Almont, Ridge Valley, and Argus, right? And Naseville, I think. Right? So those are the villages, right? So I don't know if that will ever be developed more aggressively as a village, but if it is, traffic calming is super important. I think that looking at it through the lens, you know, as a truck driver is important, and that's, that's your view, Mr. Kaiser. But I think it's a myopic one, and I think that not everything is under the guise of, is it safe for a tractor trailer to drive through this area? I think comparing it to the Milford Bridge is not a good comparison, because again, it's not a village. The Milford Bridge is wide open space leading up to that, and traffic calming is not quite as important, I think, as it is in the Twin Churches area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I just do want to clarify something, though, that's important since we are recording this. That is not my optic view as a truck driver, and I'm not trying to increase traffic on that road. I my view and objective is safety of motorists and not beating somebody too fast, having an accident. That's my objective. I don't want to see any more trucks, and I'm I'm happy with the traffic that's on there. However, our job here is to provide safety and welfare for our residents, and that is what my intention is in trying to make this so that it can be safe and passable. And and if you've been around as long as I have, the bridge up in Milford, okay, that was Campbell's Dam. That bridge was a one lane hump bridge as well, and it was very high, and that was a bottleneck, too. Traffic used to back all the way up that hill to Milford Square before they replaced that bridge. So it does help, but I do understand traffic calming. I mean, I I'm not going to dispute that that does slow people down and stop them from going through the bridges there. But my intent is for safety.
I appreciate that. I just think that safe and passable is one way to look at it. I think safe and walkable is how our roads should be looked at in the future.
Thank you for your comment. Yes.
Uh, Don White. So yeah, I had a plan on bringing this up because I wasn't at last month's meeting, but uh, yeah, so that's what we hear all through the community is that the bridges are traffic calming, and they are traffic calming at the bridge. As soon as people get over that bridge, the car gets matted and they're back at 50 miles an hour. It doesn't do anything. At the two areas, it calms traffic down. It doesn't do anything anywhere else. So yeah, I agree with you. It it will be, even if we pass this, it'll be a long time down the road until those bridges get replaced. However, Allentown Road is, it's just in horrible condition. The 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 carway's too small, the ditches are too deep. The corners are too sharp, too many boulders, no shoulders. I mean, the road's terrible. You don't dare walk on that road. I don't even like to go out to get to my mail. The road is dangerous, and all we got are too many signs. It looks terrible. There's signs all over the place now. So the thing we think we all need to understand is, we pay one of the highest road taxes in the nation, and we put up with a road like that. That's just not right. We, as a community, need to contact our legislators and say, wait a minute, we need this road fixed. There's no shoulder on it at all. The shoulder, the white line is breaking away in many places. We have to do something about the road. I think the road could get fixed before, before the bridges will ever get fixed. Can you slow the traffic down? No, and I'm going to gloat a little. I told people 20 years ago, if you don't like the traffic on Allentown Road, you should probably move. I got billified for that statement, but there it is. There's traffic all over that bridge north of my house, backs up to my house, which is almost a half a mile away, when the turnpikes close. You can't, I can't go, there's a bridge on both sides of me. I can't go anywhere. Nobody asked me if I wanted a one lane. One other thing before I go, the the one north of me, when they built it, they added to the hump, they put more pavement on the hump. You can't see across when there's a car over there. That needs to be milled off of there and gotten rid of. All right, that's all.
Thank you for your comment. As I, as I said, the first step is to change the resolution and to make it available. We know the road needs, if if two lane safe as well bridges go in there, if they ever do get that, I will be fighting hard to get the roads fixed and widened first and and have the ditches improved. It's going to take work, and it's going to take a a lot of money to plan it.
We're even on the tenure plan for the road.
It doesn't matter, but we can't go anywhere, and I've been trying to say this, we can't go anywhere without having that resolution removed. They won't, they won't, they won't do it. Okay. Next.
Yes, Van Artstown, Old Mill Road. Um, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the area. Oh, did you see the bridge on Callahill? They made it two lane. It's beautiful, safer, and I'm with, I'm with you on the resolution, removing the road.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we have a motion made in a second.
I just want to be clear as far as for what what's being asked, forgive my unfamiliarity, unfamiliarity with the resolution at issue, but we are authorizing to draft a resolution to rescind the previous resolution. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
No worries. Thank you for for clarifying that, so we make sure we get it right. We have a motion made in second.
One more comment. As I said last month, just be careful what you wish for.
Understand. Understand. Okay, so motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Okay. Any other old business? Any new business?
Tomorrow's the first day of spring.
Wonderful, but it isn't going to be 70 degrees.
Right, 5:01 AM.
Okay. Moving
I'll be there.
Moving on, uh, public, public comment, please state your name and address. Yes, sir.
Arthur Ketterer, Augustine Road. Question for that gentleman, probably. Just curious, if water and sewer comes down your road, and do you have to hook up to both, or can you choose? So I have a well, and I have private sewer. So like, can I just hook up sewer and not the water, or how does that work? I was thinking of the future, it's coming, so.
This is public comment? This is not for that? But is this, is it something that could, that you could answer reasonably quick or
sewer was many a lot of times tonight, so.
Public sewer's not coming down your road right now, right?
Well, no.
No.
Okay. Pavement. I think you should do that. It's a good idea. It's right there, so. And when is Augustine getting paved? When is that roughly this way?
Hopefully in the next two weeks, but I will put it on the website and send an email out. It's always up to the discretion of the paving company and weather.
Okay, and for the bridges, I think it's, both of you have a good points, but maybe ask the chief, last five or 10 years, how many accidents were there and stuff like that? Maybe that would help decisions, things like that for safety. Thank you.
No, I would answer that. I know we have it somewhere in our old paperwork that I think every like five, seven, 10 years, we have a study of accidents at the two humpback bridges on Allentown Road and the entrances, and it always comes back that, yep, this is a really bad location, and people end up trading mirrors, and there's not much we can do about it because it's a Penn Dot Road and Penn Dot doesn't listen to us when we tell them what to do. But I know we have figures from a couple of years ago, because remember, we had a full report about 10 years ago, and I think chief had some other numbers, but we'll, maybe we can put them up on the website, but I know we have them. You're smart enough not to touch this. Everybody else is maybe less.
Thank you for your input. Okay. Any other public comment?
Don White. So Hilltown Township. I'd like to see the copy, I'd see how the information has, last year, they approved an increase to their budget for the seven fire companies that serve them. Um, we only have four, but they're also looking to get a study done by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development to conduct a study on the local fire services in Hilltown. I would encourage the township to coattail onto that and see if you can't get a study done for West Rock Hill, so we have a closer and better idea of, you know, how terminal our volunteer fire departments are.